We will call the order. Today's Albany Common Council meeting, near February 22nd, Thursday, February 22nd. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Onané.
Present.
Mr. Pliers.
Here.
Mr. Ballerin.
Present.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Ms. Fahey.
Here.
Ms. Ferrell.
Here.
Mr. Flynn.
Here.
Mr. Igo.
Here.
Mr. Howie.
Here.
Mrs. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Here.
Ms. Love.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Robinson. It's fifteen, present.
Thank you. Can you all stand with me and join me in saying to pledge allegiance and also having a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to public comment period is now open. Will the clerk please call the first speaker?
Ms. Andrea Wilkinson.
Hello, everyone. Before I begin, I'd like to take a moment to just recognize the, is this thing on? Forgot where they are. I'd just like to take a moment before I begin to recognize the people of color on this council. Mr. Onané, who I believe is one of the youngest African-American ever elected to this council. Ms. Pliers, Mr. Ballerin, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Kimbrough, Ms. Love, Ms. Robinson, and of course, our president and clerk, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Ellis. Thank you all for supporting your minority communities and I think giving a voice to minority communities, not just the white community, really shows the diversity of the city. So, thank you all for your service. If I could do five minutes on Black History Month, I'd do ten, but unfortunately with the events of Parkland, I have to focus on other things. What is going on in this country? It seems every, every two to three days, there's a school shooting in this country. I'm not even sure if you heard, but a mere four or five days after Parkland, a seventh grader in Ohio went, took a gun to school, went into the bathroom, and shot himself. And, Mr. President, I fully anticipate using my full five minutes, so please let me know when my time is up. I, I'm both at a loss for words and could speak endlessly about this topic. It's sickening. And what's even more sickening is the inaction of Washington, of the states where these happen, and thankfully, I hope nothing like that ever happens here. But I'm calling on the committee chairperson for public safety. I know who you are, but I know I'm not supposed to call you out by name. I'm calling on you to, yes, thank you, Ms. Pliers, to schedule a meeting, because I know from speaking with another council member, that public safety meetings don't occur unless there's something on the agenda. Well, tonight, I'm putting this on the agenda. We need to have a meeting. We need to find out what we can do to keep schools safer. I grew up in this area. I remember going to school in nineteen on New Scotland Ave. Now, I hear there's locks on every door of the building. How, how did we get to where we are in this country? Parkland, the students in Tallahassee just, or the students in Parkland just went up to Tallahassee the other day to attend a state legislature meeting. They refuse to even have a conversation about gun violence or about gun control. You know what they did discuss minutes later? They discussed that pornography was a public health crisis. Are you freaking kidding me? We can't even have a conversation. Arming teachers is not the answer, and I'm gonna speak at the school board at the next meeting to make sure that never happens in this country. But you have people every day that guns slip into toddlers' hands and they end up shooting their brother or sister or themselves. You have people every day who get into car accidents and pull a gun on someone. A couple summers ago, a woman in Home Depot, not a security, not a police officer, not even someone who worked for Home Depot, saw, saw someone steal something from the store, runs to the parking lot, drive out, that woman pulled out her handgun and indiscriminately fired into the crowd, in, into a crowded parking lot. Is, is this the kind of attitude we want in our classrooms if you arm teachers? And who's gonna pay for that?
We have one minute left.
Thank you. Are, are we going to require our teachers? Is that gonna be a job requirement to, to prove how much time you spend in a shooting range? This is absolute madness. I, I, I don't know what to do in this country, but the answer is not nothing. If someone broke into your house, you're not gonna reach for your AR-15 because in, in a small room, that's less than useless. Literally, no one is trying to take your handguns away from you. Literally, no one. We can't have a conversation. One child choked in nineteen eighty-eight on a Kinder Egg because they, the egg is made of chocolate and has a small toy inside. One child choked to death, and those are banned in this country. Candy! And we can't have one conversation about gun violence. They always say, "Now is not the time." We need time to grieve. Yeah, after Columbine, we could've grieved.
The time's up.
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Raguso. I live at thirteen Beach Avenue, Albany, New York. Two weeks ago, I was before this council and I talked on the serial bonds. You know, from two oh four to present time, I always had a negative attitude. Two weeks ago, at the end of the meeting, I went over to Judy Dorsett, and before I could say anything, she said, "We will look at those serial bonds with a fine-toot comb." With that being said, I think I left this chamber feeling relaxed and at ease. I finally had someone that was going to look at the bonds and make sure that the funding went where it was gonna go and it was, and it was needed. So, I can't say anymore, and until next Monday, I believe, when our treasurer will come and enhance us some more on these serial bonds. But talking to Susan Rizel tonight and some of the things she told me, what she has in the works, again, I feel that the city is on the right track to get our finances in order. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. It's come to my attention that some trepidation in regards to the naming of Malcolm X Park, Clinton and Lark, that corner there. I can go into the story about how it came to fruition, but rather a little talk about, you know, our aims in regards to park naming and that we know there are several families, probably hundreds of families, that have been here for hundreds of years that deserve the naming of parks. But as it came about, that corner was named Malcolm for what he stood for, and we wanted to start an initiative, and starting with a big name. It's no different than entertainment or sports or whatever have you. When you wanna start out with something, you wanna start out with someone everybody knows, where they see it every day in school, or they see it every day on television. And we started out with him because we knew everybody would know. So, once we had the written petitions, we would say Malcolm X Parks, and most times, all I had to do was say Malcolm X and people signed. That would be the galvanizing point, and we would go from there, try to go to every corner of the city that had parks, and try to name them after people who had been here and deserved names because they'd done the work in Albany. Considering that February twenty-first was Malcolm's fifty-third anniversary of his assassination, I wanted to go for a little bit more information with him. Hopefully, I got enough time. Malcolm X was born Malcolm Little on May nineteenth, nineteen twenty-five, in Omaha, Nebraska, was assassinated February twenty-first, nineteen sixty-five. The traditional small biography doesn't do the justice El Haje Malik El Shabazz deserves, because that was his name, Omowale. Malcolm decided that the X would remain until the conditions that created it would cease. These conditions are still present, still relevant, and still oppressive. Malcolm's life officially began in nineteen fifty-two with his membership into the Nation of Islam and discovery of the teachings of the honorable Elijah Muhammad. That's when the work began, the teaching of black liberation and self-improvement, the mentoring of African men, women, and children to live the best, most prosperous life to help recognize and eliminate Western dominance over African people all over. The teacher and the student became very close, to the point that surrounding individuals that weren't as committed to absolute justice became jealous. Malcolm's work continued, and he ventured into politics and exposing the inner workings of governmental hegemony. Simultaneously, he helped increase the membership of the Nation of Islam almost tenfold, the most important part of Malcolm's life. And his work was his consistent involvement with grassroots organizations, groups who weren't subsidized by diametrically opposing corporate entities. Millions of black people went out this weekend and spent hundreds of millions of dollars to see a movie called Black Panther. Why? To view the positive African representation on the black, on the big screen. They wanted a hero when they already have one. At the end of his life, he created an institution called the Organization of African American Unity. With its main purpose, the Organization of African American Unity welcomes all persons of African origin to come together and dedicate their lives, skills, and ideas to free our people from oppression. The underlying phrase is "coming together." With this, our idea of naming parks came to fruition. Malcolm was our first and only choice. Our black shining prince lives on. I am Malcolm X. We wanted to name Malcolm because we knew everybody would know, and it would have some diverse points, and you would have some people who would be with it and people who would be against it. But again, it brings up the conversation, because we're so scared to have that conversation regularly, and the only way we're gonna defeat racism is to talk about it. We have a park that the children, because this is what this is about, the youth, has nothing to do with the adults, a safe place to play, to build up, to make it our own. So, with that, I know the resolution that said, I believe, you said March first, so I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Lastly, member of the public, last name Carter. Forgive me, I don't wanna mispronounce your name.
Thank you. Greetings to the members and to the president of the Common Council, Corey Ellis, and to Joyce Love, represents the third in which I live, third ward. And this is a pleasant, pleasant view. Historically, it was not like this. This is pleasant. This is progress. Malcolm X, we're seeking to have it named as a park, which is said that, that's the nation of Lark and, and Clinton. Malcolm X's name itself speaks volumes. One of the most important things about the name, because the name means much in life, is to give an anchor to our community. We need to begin to bring unity within our community by giving it understanding. We need to have a self-determination within our community. We need to have a collective relationship to one another for the work that's needed to be done. We need a sense of bringing some economic base to our community. We need a sense of purposes to bring that which was in our past, to bring it now, for we are the fathers and mothers of civilization and of humankind. We need to bring about the understanding of the creative dynamics and the faith walk. This is what Malcolm brings. We want to continue the legacy within our community. We need it desperately, and a good name, and what we could do with that park, even though it might be a small park, but we can do large things. And so, I hope that you would take that in consideration, for we have struggled a long time and still got a lot more struggle to do here in this country. But if we do anything of value, it's because God's in it and the victory's at hand. And if we said anything, did anything of value, all praises to the Creator, all mistakes are truly ours.
Thank you, sir. Clerk?
Darrell McGrath.
This is our last speaker that's signed up. If we have anyone else who wishes to speak, please sign up. If not, this will be our final speaker.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. My name is Darrell McGrath, and I'm the owner and occupant of number six Irving Street. And I'm here with a two-part comment on a project that has taken place on our street dating back a year. Number eighteen Irving Street was an abandoned building, and it was bought and was put under renovation a year ago. We endured six months of three emergency parking spaces for the contractors, which were renewed five times. Irving Street's a very small street. We are only allowed to park on one side of the street, and we had a lot of problems with this. We had a construction dumpster parked there. We, we sometimes saw days go by with no activity on this building. So, finally, at the six-month mark, I contacted our council member, Ms. Fahey, and she very promptly researched this, and suddenly, those emergency parking spaces disappeared. So did the dumpster. So, if the council doesn't already have a method for, or the city have a method for examining, rather than just rubber stamping the renewals on these emergency contractor parking spaces, I think it would be a great thing to look into, because we really suffered. We have the Long Energy Project going on right in back of us. We've lost a ton of parking in our neighborhood because of special construction projects. That's one issue. The other is that this work on this building started at least six weeks, to the best of our knowledge, before a construction permit was pulled. I am the, for lack of a better term, the block captain for my neighborhood association, and it's my responsibility to keep a track of these things going on on our street. I raised a concern with Commissioner McGee in an email, which was very clearly spelled out, that we thought there was possibly unauthorized, illegal, or off-code work taking place. The contractors were using an unmarked truck, they were parked haphazardly, and they were knocking holes in the walls of this building. I wanted to make sure that they were authorized to do this work. I didn't want my block blown up if they tapped a gas line. I wrote two emails to Commissioner McGee, five weeks apart, and he never responded. Apparently, he did look into the problem, but he didn't let me know that, so I finally called the police. I thought someone was cleaning the copper pipe out of this building. To add to that impression, the mortgage company that owned the building posted a notice that there had been unauthorized access to the building, and they put a padlock on it while these men were still working in the basement. By all appearances, this was illegal work. What were we supposed to do? I worried about a fire, I worried about a gas explosion, and I could not get a response from the Building and Codes Department. So, in closing, I realize Mr. McGee is very overworked and understaffed, so are we all. But this was not a frivolous complaint, and I think he owed it to direct somebody to call or email me back and say, "We're on top of this." I own my house by myself now since my husband's death, and I feel an enormous responsibility for that house, and I gotta tell you, it's not easy to own an old house in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
May I submit these emails?
Yes, absolutely.
To document my effort to reach Mr. McGee?
Yes, yes, you may. Thank you. Now, we designate it, public comment period closed. Moving on through the agenda, approval of minutes. Mr. Conti.
Mr. President, we will be approving the minutes for February fifteenth.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. Moving into consideration of local laws, local laws introduced, Ms. Duchesne, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice local law C for introduction.
Can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending section three thirty-three dash one oh seven of article twelve, alternative veterans exemption of chapter three thirty-three taxation of the Albany City Code for purposes of confirming city code provisions to existing city practice with regard to limitations on the amount of assessed value that shall be exempt for the purposes of applying the alternative veterans exemption.
Ms. Duchesne? Madam?
Mr. President, if I could just find you.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance as held, Mr. Conti.
What?
Oh, sorry.
Do, do, do.
Sorry. Committee reports, sorry. Any committee reports? Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. As mentioned earlier, on March first, we will be holding a Parks and Rec meeting, and it's gonna be discussed as six point two-two on the honoring of Malcolm X Park, and we will also be discussing summer programs with our commissioner, Jonathan Jones. Thank you.
Any further committee reports?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on February thirteenth, and we had five things on the agenda. We interviewed Trey Kingston, who is the mayor's appointee for assessor, and we voted on resolution four point two one point eighteen R, which was a resolution confirming the appointment of Trey Kingston as the commissioner of assessment, and that resolution passed unanimously with a positive recommendation to this body. We also reviewed a piece of legislation introduced by Assemblymember McDonald and Senator Breslin, requiring training for the assessor. There is general agreement that that is appropriate. We did also discuss the fact that this is apparently something that we cannot merely adopt a local law, and that we need to ask the state to impose this requirement on our assessor. There is, was only one item that is going to be discussed with the sponsor regarding a potential minor amendment on that, but otherwise, that was passed out of committee with a positive recommendation. We also reviewed the city's debt policy, which is required by the debt policy to be an annual review of it, and there were no recommendations for changes to that policy. We also reviewed the updated report on continuing balances for previously approved bond authorizations and discussed how we wanted to deal with that, with the various departments, and it would, was agreed that I would be reaching out to the various departments and have them look at existing balances and potential uses and making sure that those balances are being used before we authorize additional bonding. I wanna let people know, especially Mr. Russo, know that today I received an email from the commissioner of DGS indicating that his bonding authorizations are going to be reduced by over four hundred thousand dollars this year. And I also wanna know that that's not just the result of my work. The treasurer's office and I, and the director of the budget, administrative services, the mayor's office, and Ms. Rizzo are all in, working in tandem on this particular issue, helping make sure that we use all existing funding to minimize any bonding and also making sure that any bonding is the minimum that is necessary in order to carry out vital city functions. We, we have a meeting scheduled for next Monday at five thirty, where the treasurer will present us with the debt report, which is required before we authorize any bonding by this body. And also, we will be meeting with the commissioner of DGS and the, and the city engineer, Mr. Milano, to talk about the ten bond ordinances that have emanated from their offices' requests. I do wanna note to council members, we are now up to ten applications for the Board of Assessment Review, and the application process closes tomorrow. I have been in touch with some of the applicants to confirm that they know the number of hours that are required for that particular function, because in the past, sometimes we've had people come in for interviews and not be aware of that, and it was a waste of their time as well as the committee's time, so I'm reducing that. I will be polling committee members. We had set aside time on March nineteenth for interviews before caucus and before the council meeting. It's obvious we're not gonna be able to interview all of those people before that, particularly before the Common Council, in that one-hour allotment. So, I will be reaching out to finance committee members about scheduling another meeting for the purpose of doing interviews. So, we do have another meeting on the twenty, February twenty-sixth, one on March nineteenth, and then we have ones currently scheduled for April second and April tenth, in which, at which time, we will be considering the bonds from the police department, Parks and Rec, and also the fire department. That completes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Duchesne. Councilwoman O'Pearls?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to note and acknowledge the request from the public regarding a public safety meeting in response to gun violence and school safety, and will engage residents, members of the Public Safety Committee, so that we create an opportunity for residents to talk about some of their concerns. It's a very timely conversation, and so just wanted to note that and acknowledge the request. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few reports of the ordinance citizens of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Moving to resolutions introduced, Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution five point twenty-two point eighteen R for introduction.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council enacting a home rule message to New York State Legislature, requesting an enactment of a Senate bill, Assembly Bill number eighty-seven twenty-two, entitled "An Act to Amend the Real Property Tax Law in Relation to Requiring Assessors of Real Property in the City of Albany to Obtain Commissioner of Taxation and Finance Certification of Successful Completion of the Basic Course of Training and Education.
Ms. Duchesne? Who wanted you to?
Next question.
Next, introduction of resolution, Ms. Joyce Love. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. President. I want to introduce 622.18R.
Mr. Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution of the Common Council naming the Pocket Park at the corner of Lark Street and Clinton Avenue in honor of Malcolm X.
Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution, if you would please pass it.
Thank you. Mr. Igo?
President, the notice of resolution 722.18, in honor of Malcolm X.
Will the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to adjustments in salaries pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Albany and CSA Incorporated, AFSCME Local 1000, AFL-CIO, for the 2018 budget.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none? Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Anani?
Yes.
Mr. Plaris?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Mr. Baller?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Duchesne?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Ms. Fahy?
Yes.
Pardon me, Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Robinson? Thank you. Is 15 affirmative? Resolution passes. Councilwoman, Ms. O'Pearl, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recognize for introduction and passage of Resolution 8.22.18R.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council honoring the achievements of LaZelle LaFrance for her work as the Director of Historic Cherry Hill.
Any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none? Can a clerk please call the roll? Mr. Anani?
Yes.
Mr. Plaris?
Yes.
Mr. Baller?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Duchesne?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Pardon me, Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Is 15 affirmative? Resolution passes. Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 4.21.18R, and ask for its passage.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council confirming the appointment of Trey Kingston as the Commissioner of Assessment.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none? Can a clerk please call the roll? Mr. Anani?
Yes.
Mr. Plaris?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Baller?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Ms. Duchesne?
Yes.
Ms. Fahy?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Igo?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Is 15 affirmative? Resolution passes. Is there any miscellaneous or unfinished business? Mr. Conti?
Uh, Mr. President, before we adjourn, I'd like to ask you another committee, sort of open silence. Detective Ted McNeen passed away recently, by his brother's, recently lost his life of a rare cancer, and so he needs to keep the open silence and commission his service to the community, and our city needs to stand with him.
Can we do that? I think Councilmember Flynn would like... Oh, you didn't?
No.
Oh. Okay. So we'd like to stand for a moment of silence before we adjourn?